I'd like to start the meeting if everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any subtractions from the consent agenda?
No, sir.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Okay, first up, we have a public hearing for the Freeway Drive District Sewer and Water Main Extensions. So Elizabeth, I need to open a public hearing for that, or is that...
You will have just read the notice and then we'll open the hearing.
Okay, I'll open a meeting if you want to read the notice.
Notice of hearing on improvement. To whom it may concern, notice is hereby given that the Columbus City Council will meet in the City Hall 16319 Kettle River Boulevard at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, April 25, 2018, to consider the making of an improvement of sanitary sewer and water main extensions from West Freeway Drive, 600 feet north of I-35W, to approximately 1,000 feet south of I-35W to serve the proposed Petunias Roadways, asphalt production facilities, and other properties in the I-35W, I-35P Freeway Triangle area. City project 1811. By subrayed excavation, sanitary sewer, gravity pipe, and force main installation, sanitary lift station installation, water main pipe installation, and miscellaneous items of construction pursuant to Minnesota statutes, Chapter 429. The area proposed to be assessed for such improvements is each lot or parcel which avoids on or gains access from these streets. The estimated cost of the improvement for which assessments will be levied is $833,800. Persons desiring to be heard with reference to the proposed improvement will be heard at this meeting, signed with Mersko City Administrator, published in the Forest Lake Times on April 12th and April 19th, 2018.
Thank you, fine job. Okay, Dennis, do you have anything to add to the...
I did have at the previous meeting, I presented a feasibility report and offered three options for where the utilities could be located. At that meeting was decided, the council decided option three, where the lift station, sanitary sewer lift station, and line, gravity line, and water main will all be on the east side of West Freeway Drive. And since that meeting, we've had conversations with both the, both property owners in the Triangle area, and looking at the combination of all the private utilities that are in the east side of 50, um, West Freeway Drive, as well as some utilities are going to be relocated there as well. I'm going back to recommending option one, where the lift station is on the west side of, um, West Freeway Drive. I don't know if you have a diagram of...
Is it that one there?
That is it. It's hard to, hard to see the green... Nope, that's the option two, where the lift station's on the north side of 35.
Dennis, will option one impact a potential future exit ramp there?
No, so that's option one that is on the screen there with the lift station in the, we'll call it the west side of West Freeway Drive, south of 35. And if there would ever be a off-ramp in the future, it would not be that close to the intersection, it would be south of the lift station.
No, but the approach to County 54? Wouldn't it be up where that driveway is there, or would it be more...
The approach on the...
Yeah, I mean, wouldn't we be, wouldn't it be coming up into this area here, any ramp? Or would it be coming up over into here more?
More where the second place is.
Here?
Yeah.
Okay. So you don't propose that be at all?
No, the lift station will not be in the way. There's also a billboard right there.
And how about this crossing here?
Yeah, that'll be a force main crossing, jack directionally drilled under the freeway, so, you know, that can...
It won't be that deep then?
It won't be that deep, it'll be probably a four inch or a six inch, and these are mid-dive.
Okay, so then a ramp that comes here won't be an issue either?
No, the force main would just be, you know, going along the edge of the West Freeway Drive there.
Alright.
So, there was a minor cost differential, option A is actually a little bit less than option C, so, instead of the 833, and again, this is a preliminary estimate, it would be closer to $819,000. Other than that, there's no other changes from the feasibility report.
So we read into the record, the 833, does that have to be amended, or... No? Okay. Alright, any council have any other input or questions? Okay, does the public have any input? Do we get the public input now, Elizabeth? Be alright? Any public input on the proposed triangle? Okay, hearing done, Jake, you have anything to add? You're good? Okay. Alright, does anyone want to make a motion to, um, order this project?
Right, there's a resolution also enclosed that if the council should so choose, then it would authorize the city engineer to prepare plans and specs. Mr. Mayor, if you may, if you want to make a motion to close the public hearing and then order the project.
Okay. Alright, anyone want to make, anyone want to make a motion to close the hearing?
I'll move second.
Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Get hearings closed. Anyone want to make a motion to adopt or order this project?
Resolution 1811.
1811.
Make a motion to adopt resolution 1811?
Second.
Okay, further discussion? When would this happen?
We would start basically immediately, and then the plan is to still get this constructed this fall, so...
Okay, is there any timing of money at all, Elizabeth? That has to be a better time than another to...
We would bond for this project, and I've already contacted Tammy Amidal, who is our representative, and she has put a calendar together, and it, and we would have proceeds in September.
Okay. Okay.
Is the, is the, the fees going to be split between two property owners on there? $800,000?
Right.
$800 plus?
It was a percentile range, one had to pay more than the other.
Okay. I personally hate to get ahead of the game on the sewer and water, I've said it before. I think putting this out, we're putting it out on a limb, I mean, something happens with the asphalt plant doesn't go in, or vice versa, or the other plant doesn't build, we're going to be on a hook for $800,000, we got a lot of debt right now, I think we should wait, so...
Okay. Danny, did you make a motion to adopt it?
Yes, I did.
You seconded by Bill? Okay, you have a discussion to mark?
Nope.
Okay. Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
The ayes carry. Okay, is there anything else you needed on that, Elizabeth?
Nothing further on that.
Okay, alright, planning commission report? Miss Krebs?
Mr. Mayor, I have the first item on the, the planning commission report. At our last meeting, Mr. Swenson came before you as he applied for an interim use permit for residential zone business, and it was at the direction of the council that he obtained some additional information. Mr. Swenson and his brother Randy are here this evening, so I'll invite them up to the table at this time.
Could you slide over?
During the last council meeting, there were some, some concerns, and Mr. Swenson has been addressing your concerns.
Okay. First concern was the state dealership stuff, and they, you have, what do you have to answer that question?
I went to the state, spoke to the head lady down there, and I got some paperwork from her, and I turned it into Elizabeth.
Okay.
So on pages 34 and 35, Mr. Swenson submitted a letter from the Department of Public Safety, and it is a letter stating that the, about motor vehicle dealer licenses is in good standing and is an approved, in an approved location. He also submitted a copy of the dealer, the current dealer's license, and I understand, at the last meeting, that there was a question that asked, how many cars did he sell in 2017? So, he's indicated to me that he sold 53 cars in 2017. And then the other question that was before, or the council had, was about taxes. And I did have Ken evaluate the taxes and as to whether or not Mr. Swenson paid commercial taxes on the residential property, and he does. And the amount for 2018 is $302.62 extra because of the residential zone business. In addition, Mr. Swenson has a question on condition number three, and he feels that it's necessary to clarify the difference between light repair and heavy repair. And maybe, Tom, you can kind of articulate your concerns between what the line is between light and heavy repair.
Go ahead, Tom. What is, what do you think the line is?
Well, most of the stuff that I do is Bondo, other places. But I would like to be able to take the bumper off a car, put the bumper back on the car, a fender, a strut. I know it says in there that I'm not supposed to change brakes, but I would like to be able to change the brakes if I need to. I do not want to change engines, I do not want to change transmissions.
Rear ends? Rear ends?
Pretty much nothing mechanical, we can avoid it.
Okay.
We farm most of it out.
Okay.
Neither one of us are too interested in working on cars anymore.
So when you do the fenders and bumpers, do you put just new ones on, then paint them, or they're painted somewhere else?
Somebody else paints them.
Painted somewhere else.
Swap the fender and bumper and grill and such?
That's bodywork, though.
Yeah, that, no...
I've done it, it's bodywork.
I, I think bodywork is when you use Bondo and paint and primer and sand, but...
Yeah, we don't do any of that.
Right.
We don't do any bodywork.
Where do you do this, do you do this in your personal residence, or do you do this in the building where you sell the cars?
In the barn.
Okay. Alright, um... Alright, anything else you want to add?
This is one other item that Mr. Swenson has taken care of, and that is, he did go to Anoka, or he called Anoka County and talked to the person in charge to hazardous waste in the environmental health and community services section. My understanding is that Mr. Swenson has to get the paperwork, apply to Anoka County, indicating how much oil waste he has, and then Anoka County will determine whether or not he needs a permit or not. And so he has initiated the call, initiated the paperwork, it just hasn't been processed yet.
Okay.
Says approved location, you're at an approved location, did the state approve that, or... They approved a car lot in a residential area, they do that? Okay.
So, they came out and looked at your place since la, since two weeks ago? Did an inspection? So they're going on what we did prior to this. We approved it prior to this.
Right.
And they're going on that.
Five years ago?
I guess. They never came out inspected.
They've been out more than once.
Inspector comes out every year, a couple times, and looks the place over, looks the paperwork over. If they don't like it, they can shut you down. So yeah, they have been out there.
I have, I have dealer licenses.
So they're aware of what, what it is?
This expires this year?
Dealer license?
Yes, September 30th, 2018. That's what it says, yeah. Okay. Anything else, Elizabeth, that you, that you had? Danny, anything?
You got that waste oil thing that he's going after, it's, if it's approved, you just got to keep track of what you do, and you, your oil you use, recycle. And like you said, like you said before, he don't think he does enough to require one, with only person knows that, Anoka County.
Right.
There, there, it's, it's nothing, it's no big thing, a little fee that they got to pay, and then get a sticker on your wall.
Mark, any input?
Well, they should never have gone in there in the first place, but how do you take it away when you already got it going? I would like to see the, go from five years to maybe two years. Something's got to be addressed to the city with this, prevent this from happening again.
As far as the dealership stuff?
Yes, I agree, and mechanics are working like that, it's, something's got to change, but...
Well, there's a lot of mechanics, it, the thing that, for me, is that, you know, dealership and, I don't, I don't see dealership, I mean, dealership ranges from what you have to, you know, the Berkel Buick, you know, the, the big thing, right? And obviously, that wouldn't belong here.
Mr. Swenson has asked for up to 20 cars on his property, but inside the barn. So he's not allowed to put any cars outside the barn.
If you go past his place, it's, it's kept up clean and...
Yeah, it's, it's reasonable, but there is no sign on one side.
He would not be able to tell anything was going on. It's, it's kept pretty neat, he keeps his place neat, and I keep mine, I'll give him that.
I, I guess the only question is, that I have, is the, you know, if you do have people going to your place, and is, there's no name on the one side of the mailbox? So, I only saw the name on RT on the one side, be the east side?
When they give them directions, they're always coming from the same direction, so they can see it on the mailbox.
Okay. Okay, I, I just, I wouldn't want confusion, so people are bugging neighbors, hey, where's R&amp;T Auto? You know?
There's a sign, there's a sign on the barn, isn't there?
It's tough to see.
I think that's happened maybe once in the nine years.
Okay.
Now that technology and cell phones, using their cell phones for directions, and it's crazy.
Gets you closer, yeah. Okay, so, as regards to number three here, it says no bodywork, so, I mean, we would have to... Split what bodywork is, I guess, I mean, is bodywork changing a fender and a bumper and a grill, or is that, I mean, it, it is in the sense, but it, it isn't chemicals and Bondo and sand dust and all the other noise that goes with, with typical body dent repair, things like that. So, so that, that would be something that you'd have to talk about, and then it also says, uh, no brake work, which... Of your 53 cars, how many did you have to change brakes?
Complete gas, maybe ten.
So it's not that big a deal? Okay, so, to make, to make you...
The game is to not do anything. Just get a car, and then sell it. So I try to, I try to send everything out, as much as possible. I just don't want to all of a sudden be changing some bumper cover, or doing, you know, a set of pads, and then somebody sees me, and then...
Yeah, I, I get that, I appreciate your honesty. So... I guess...
Look, we're clarifying no bodywork.
Yeah.
Anything that you bolt on could be allowed, and the bodywork is like sanding or painting and stuff like that, that's what...
That's, I think what was intended there, but you could argue either way on the way it's worded. So no, uh, how would, how would you want to word that, Danny?
No bodywork.
Mr. Mayor, could you say changing, changing of tires, fenders, bumpers? Brake work, headlights? With the examples, because that's what, I mean, that's what you identified. I don't know what you want to do with brake work, and, and, because that's in the, that was in, that was in the second sentence also.
Right, I mean...
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Bill?
I think we're losing sight of the whole thing. What Tom does, all this goes with his business, really. Any used car dealership usually has recon, okay? And they do that stuff, this all goes with that. I think we're losing sight of what we talked about is this kind of a business in a residential zone. And that's, I think that's what we're losing sight of. This goes with his business, no matter where he would go. This goes along with any used car lot, that, a lot of them have their own little shops, their own little stuff. This is what used car lots do. They recon their own cars. Yeah, the big stuff, the paint work, all that goes down. So, I mean, I'm, I'm more with what Mark said. You know, he said two years, I was going to recommend a year. To give them a year to, you know, find a place to be and to go, and, uh... But I think this goes with it, I don't think you can get around not doing a lot of this stuff. I mean, to me, a brake job, you doing on your own cars there is no different than a resident doing them in his garage, too, it's the same thing. Brake jobs is no big deal. It's the running the dealership out of a residential neighborhood. I think that's where we're losing sight, this, this has to go with it. I mean, you can't say to me that none of this is going to get done, because that's what you do, you recon cars to resell them, you have to do something. You can't, especially if you're buying them from Car, Cole Park or whatever.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying.
But keeping the, the noise that goes with the body repair is what I think the, the goal there, but...
Right, air tools and such like that.
Exactly, yeah.
Crazy. I don't use any air tools, period.
Yeah.
It's all battery powered, and it's very quiet. I had people stand at the end of the driveway and listen while I'm working, you can't do that.
Okay, so how, how much longer do you intend on doing this there?
As long as I was allowed to.
Okay.
I mean, I've never had an issue with any of the neighbors, I've never created any problem. So I still don't understand what the issue is. I'm following all the rules.
You are, you're just stuck in a bad spot, because this is something we don't think should be in the area, but you were granted to do that, and you're running a great operation, nobody disputes that. What we are concerned about is this going on further in the city, so that's why we're talking about this like we are. You know, I don't want, I mean, people could start putting them up all over, then what's the identity of a rural?
They're already all over, there's several people doing it, there's several people with permits. I was told, last time I was here, I asked, someone said there's only one, that's not true.
Well, you're right, there's a whole bunch of them, and Columbus is doing it illegally.
A lot of them are just auto repair, not necessarily dealerships, where they buy and bring cars there, recon them and then sell them, so... Well, so, and I, and I agree, I mean, you haven't, there was one complaint, but that complaint, I wasn't all that founded, so, I get that. I mean, I, I, maybe I agree, maybe, I mean, Jake, do we have the discretion on the period on these, or is it always a five-year?
I think the ordinance says up to five years.
Okay.
And I think Mr. Swenson has had three permits? Does he have a one-year, a two-year, or a five-year?
Yeah, he has one, two, and a broad.
Yeah.
Okay. It seems like the five-year was just yesterday, because I remember this five years ago.
Yeah.
So, it does come fast. Maybe, uh... I don't know, I, I think in the scenario we got here, we don't have any complaints, if we did have complaints, um, we wouldn't have but till five years to renew it, so... Maybe three years might be a, a better thing, so it could be at least reviewed in three years, something like that. So, and, and take out the brake thing, and define bodywork as... As what Elizabeth said there. Elizabeth, I want to read that back, what you're thinking?
I have change of tires, fenders, bumpers, struts.
The sentence is in the negative, the sentence is in the negative, so you'd have to, um, have another sentence in the positive, if that's what you're trying to do.
I, I took everything out, um, it says here, and some light repair work for the purpose of preparing the vehicles for sale. Example, changing of tires, and then I was going to say fenders, bumpers, struts, headlights, oil and brake work, and then no bodywork, engine work, transmission work, take out brake work, painting or other...
Okay.
More intensive works, they'll be permitted in connection with the residential zone business.
Yeah, that sounds fine to me, I don't know, what do you think, guys? Clear enough, Danny?
Yeah, clear enough.
Okay. Someone want to make a motion to approve or deny this, um, residential zone business?
I'll make a motion to approve the variance, uh, for two years.
Two years?
Yeah.
How many years?
Two.
I think something needs to be looked at, a little closer every year, I mean, we can't have these popping up all over, and I know you say there's a lot of them around, but that doesn't make it right, and I, I, I talked to your neighbors and stuff, and nobody had a problem except the one.
Yeah.
But it, it could be the next guy has a big problem, and then we're going all over, trying to straighten it out, it's two years, we can relook at it, and it should go easier next time, if it's going to go.
That's what I thought this time.
Yeah, it was five years, so it was a while.
Okay.
But it's, it's... I don't know.
Any...
Second it.
Second it, marking.
Mr. Mayor, come over here, can you repeat the motion, I think you said...
It's, well, Jeff, I'm assuming your motion includes what Elizabeth read into the paper with the, taking the brake work out and adding the definition of...
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you support interim use permit?
For two years, yes.
For two years.
Is that what the motion are heard?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, Mark, comments? Okay. Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
One nay. Okay, so that'll be two years, and then we'll have to look at it again. Alright, thanks. Alright, next up, we have the lovely Miss Krebs.
Mr. Mayor, City Council. I believe Elizabeth is going to address the first bullet of the planning commission report.
Uh, we already did that, we're on the second.
We already, I'm sorry, we're on, okay. Okay. On April 18th, at 7:00 PM, the planning commission, with all the members present, held a public hearing to receive testimony regarding a request for preliminary and flat, plat, and final plat for the North Metro Honeys Initiative plat two, and the application for a PUD. The applicant gave the following testimony. Ace's Hotel LLC, that has been brought before us two years ago for consideration, has made some modifications to their plans. Starting with size dimensions, going from .89 acres to 1.7 acres, building floors from four stories to five stories, and building height from 50 feet increased to 69.4 feet. In addition, an application for conditional use permit for a PUD. An updated map was handed out by the applicant at the hearing. The testimony went into the explanation of easements, being reciprocal easement agreements with the shared ingress, egress, shared parking, and public utilities. Testimony was also given on the provision of the water and sewer by running Ace's Harness Park to the hotel by location and pipe size. This is also stated in numbers nine and 10 in the findings of fact on your, in your packet. Rice Creek Watershed District permit is a conditional approval pending receipt of, of changes, has been previously filed, that was filed the first time. And testimony was given that an updated plan had been submitted to Rice Creek, and that Rice Creek said they are comfortable with the process that is being taken. According to our findings and facts at that time, we are still waiting on the approval of that by Rice Creek. In addition to the findings of fact number one in that area, the verbiage was also added, and preliminary plat supplement on April 18th, 2018. We also spoke about the building exterior design, interior floor by floor, and the amenities throughout the hotel. During the public hearing, a request for a conditional use permit to include a PUD was made. This will also allow exceptions to regular lot and yard area, setbacks for dumpster enclosure, hotel height, and loss of the 37 existing parking spaces. And this is referenced in number nine of the recommendations. And also in number seven, and this is in the PUD portion of the recommendations, there was a correction of date made from March 2nd, 2018 to April 18th, 2018. The application for Trinity Business Consulting for a CUP and PUD... The application for, uh, Trinity Business Consulting for a CUP and PUD is coming before you, the City Council, tonight with a unanimous recommendation for approval.
Okay.
The applicant is here, right?
The applicant is here this evening along with the architect.
Okay, can we?
Sure, you guys wanna come up? Welcome. Got your names and?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, city staff. I'm John Seibert, and I live at one six two seven one Ramsey Boulevard in Ramsey, Minnesota, or correction, Royal Road in Ramsey, Minnesota. Got a little ahead of myself, I'd apologize.
Uh, sure, uh, my name's Jan Knudsen. I'm with Cunningham Architects. Um, I live at twenty-four seventeen Bryant Avenue South, Minneapolis, Minnesota.
Bill?
So I, I was sat in on an awesome plan. I actually called Peter Frank the next day and told him, congratulations, this is amazing. So, much bigger than last fall's plan and stuff. So, I had a couple of questions. I don't know if it's relevant. First of all, I didn't quite catch the, the dumpster issue. I mean, I'm trying to, is that on the, would that be on the east end of the building then? Is that where you could plan? Okay.
Go over here, right?
Yeah. Okay, so that makes sense. And then what, what about the, the whack and sack feeds for the sewer and water hookup? I mean, that, I, I thought about that last week.
So my understanding is John Seibert contacted the council and that, and a sack determination has been completed. And we've talked about this and, um, whatever the sack determination would be, we would then transfer that to the water. So if it was twenty-six sack, it would be twenty-six water.
Okay.
And I don't, I'm not just sure, I don't remember what the number was.
Well, and we did end up contacting the Met Council, and Met Council basically did it on a preliminary one. And now we're gonna resubmit the plans once we get approval of this, where we, we will resubmit to the Met Council at that particular point in time. Then they'll end up making a final determination as to the actual sack and whack units. Typically, it's one per two. So we have a hundred and sixteen rooms, divide that by two, and that, that'd be the number of, uh, sack units it would have.
Okay, so there will be, those costs will be there, okay?
That's correct.
And then the other question I, did we work out, have we worked through the? I think it's a great idea to be using the existing, uh, ret, ret, or, uh, kitchen, uh, stuff to, you know, feed the, feed the people in the hotel, if it can be done. It only makes good business sense. Did, and are we working through the?
Alcohol?
Alcohol stuff?
That, that would be part of the developer's agreement, or? At what point would that be addressed?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there's, we are continuing to work through these issues and, um, I'll go into it just briefly. In general is, uh, the, the interest is in being able to move alcohol between one part of the facility to your hotel room and back. Right now, we're going to have two separate entities as proposed. Uh, each entity would have presumably a liquor license. Um, however, Minnesota law is very clear that all alcohol sold on a premises has to stay on the premises. So you could not, and we've worked through with the state, uh, and confirmed that you cannot have two liquor licenses and move between two separate compact and contiguous premises.
Can I ask a question at that point? Otherwise I'll probably forget. So can't they, can't the hotel buy liquor from the, uh, from the casino wholesale and move it that way?
A restaurant license cannot include a hotel. Uh, so currently, the existing facility operates under a restaurant license, under Minnesota law. That license cannot be a hotel. However, the hotel could obtain a license. The restaurant license would go away. They would forfeit that license. And this facility would have to, under Minnesota law, operate as one single hotel facility. Uh, if the council made a determination that the entire facility was a compact and contiguous premises, that interpretation could stand and they could have liquor travel from one end of the facility to the other and back under one license.
So why wouldn't we do that?
We can certainly do that. The applicant will need to demonstrate that, that, exactly, control.
Train you.
Over the alcohol, training. Uh, there's also a, uh, given the two separate entities, there'll need to be an operating agreement, uh, that staff, uh, of, of both, that staff serving alcohol and staff of both facilities, um, are under the same insurance. So we can get there, I, I believe, if the applicant demonstrates, and they've expressed a willingness to do so. So we just have to continue to work out the details, uh, make sure it's compliant with state law.
So if, if, uh, someone staying in the hotel goes into the casino, does a casino, watches the horses, whatever, and has a drink, they can't, or a beer, they can't take it back to the hotel? And, and the reason I ask that is because just about everywhere you go around the country, if there's a, if there's a bar in the hotel, you can go down and get a beer, or you could go down and get a drink and take it to your room.
Correct, if the bar is in the hotel. And here.
So my second question is, a lot of times when you're traveling, they set up a temporary bar. Well, you know, whether in Hawaii they did it where they're down to the lobby and it, and it's from four to six or whatever, where they have alcohol and some hors d'oeuvres and all that stuff. So the hotel could do that?
They certainly could. The hotel can get a liquor license. They can absolutely get a liquor license as long as they have a restaurant, thirty seats, under statute. The issue is that contact and contiguous premises, they cannot take it over one, over that, through that imaginary wall.
Well, that, that passageway, basically.
And there, I believe there's some outdoor areas.
Yes, there is.
And that, and again, that's, that's really where the issues are going to lie, is where does that premises? And unless we treat the entire facility as one compact and contiguous premises, which I think we can get there with the applicant if that's council's direction, certainly it's able to.
So what makes the difference between, and I probably could answer this myself, but what makes the difference between getting a drink at the, at the bar in the casino and going to the hotel versus if a guy brings his own six pack with him from a, from a liquor store? One's wholesale, one's off sale?
Well, on a, typically on a licensed premises, you can't bring your liquor, your own liquor. Well, if they have, they've got a liquor, well.
I'm just saying, for years, when I stayed in the sun went in, my construction buddies brought their old Milwaukee beer and their schnapps there every night.
And that may certainly happen, and, you know, that's the kind of enforcement, enforcement is that. Ultimately, that's a, they need to enforce that internally. The real, I mean, the real issue is purchasing alcohol on one premises and taking it to another. That's, that's where the conflict lies under the statute. And we believe we, we have a workaround, uh, by issuing a liquor license to the hotel and the restaurant on the facility. They, they can have one restaurant, two restaurants, they can have several. They're all operated under a single liquor license, one single insurance policy, single training program. Uh, and then they can move freely throughout the premises as long as they can demonstrate that it is going to be a controlled, compact and contiguous premises.
Cause right now, they take it outside to the stands, right? In that area?
And the trout pond.
Right.
And the existing, the proposed location of the hotel is largely located in the existing compact and contiguous premises. So I, I believe that we can, we can get there, but again, it's about demonstrating control, security, training.
This might be off the cuff. So when you rent a hotel, doesn't that become your space?
For certain purposes.
Yeah, so that means, I mean, if you brought alcohol in there, that's your space for the night.
I'm not, I, I can't weigh in on that.
I think the public areas is really more in question.
Right.
I mean, it's off the cuff.
Right, and, and the real, and again, the real issue is just purchasing and bringing somewhere else. You can't do that with an on-premises license.
The, the same thing happens with their RVs that park out back. Once they hook up, the castle doctrine kicks in and a lot of other things go.
There you go.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, uh, the CEO, Taralito, and I have had extensive conversations today, again, in reference to this particular issue. And, uh, we've, we've kinda come to the, the basis of the fact that if we need to get two separate liquor licenses and then put a, put signs up that say no alcohol can leave the premises that was purchased in one premise or the other, uh, if, if that does allow you to end up getting around the corner, why, I mean, we're, we're certainly not trying to end up making this complicated and trying to end up making it so to rewrite the statutes. Uh, what we're trying to do, obviously, is provide the convenience for people to be able to go back and forth. But, uh, but as we talked about it today, I just said, if, if, if it comes to the point where we need to buy two separate liquor licenses, are you okay with that? And he said he would be okay with doing it. So we could do it. Our, our initial intent was to have the ability to go back and forth. The other side of it was, is what we wanted to be able to do is somewhat like what Courtyard does, where we'd have a manager's reception in the evening from the four to six, four to seven type of thing in the hotel, so that they could end up having a drink there and that sort of thing. And then we wanted to expand it. After we talked about it for a while, we said, maybe we should expand so we could end up having it so that they can go from the hotel to the casino and back and still have the same drink, the same beer. Uh, and that's where that whole issue started to come into play. So, um, but we, you know, and looking at it, we're just saying, if, if it becomes an overly cumbersome process to try and end up getting it done, we are okay with having a separate liquor license in both places.
Jake, if they, if they did a separate license in each one, could the rest, could their, could the restaurant, could they have one restaurant and two, you know, one restaurant cover both? Both premises, even though there's two licenses?
No, no, no. We, we, if, if the entire facility is going to operate under a single license, it has to be a license that is issued to the hotel. And it could, that, that could be issued to an entity that manages the hotel and also manages the staff of, uh, the restaurant.
But yet the hotel doesn't have a bar, is that correct?
Uh, the intent is, is that it wouldn't have a bar per se. It'd be a continental breakfast area that we convert over in the afternoon and have the ability to end up serving drinks from that. So, but it's not a, uh, true full bar, if we could call it that, so.
The restaurant has a bar. I mean, a serious bar.
That's correct. That's correct.
Maybe I, maybe I misunderstood Elizabeth's question. If we have a hotel license.
Mm-hmm.
A hotel license has to be issued, a hotel must have a restaurant on site.
To have a license.
Exactly.
So it sounds like that's out, cause you're not gonna have a restaurant in the hotel.
Well, the, again, this is a fine line as to how you interpret restaurant. Uh, if we have more than thirty-some seats in there, and we've got about sixty-some seats in that, in that, uh, continental breakfast area, which is the area that we'd end up having the bar in as well. And, um, and it's, it's, like I said, kind of a fine line as to what is a restaurant. So we would be serving like pizzas and that sort of thing out of the continental breakfast area there in the afternoon.
That would have a food license that goes with it?
Yes, that would end up having a food license that would go along with it. So, so we, when, go ahead, Jacob.
Right, there, there are a few additional requirements of the restaurant, but, but we can absolutely, the applicant, we've discussed it extensively. They're willing to work in order to get to that. However, if that's insufficient, if they don't wanna tweak that model and they wanna operate the entire facility as one single hotel facility, including the card room, including the trout pond, uh, we can do that under a single license. A single hotel license would allow that.
But we, or if they had the restaurant liquor license and could, could satisfy our compact and contiguous requirements, then they would, wouldn't need another license, they could just extend it. Is that what you're saying?
On the?
From the existing restaurant?
The, no, and it, uh.
You're saying you cannot do that no matter what?
You cannot, a restaurant license under the statute cannot include a hotel. A hotel must include a restaurant. It's a, so it's a statutory requirement that a restaurant license is anything but, uh, a hotel. So that's, that's the issue that we've been working through and there's.
Well, what's a hotel? I mean, is the, the lobby in the first floor, there's no people living there, is that the hotel?
Sure, sure. I mean, imagine, uh, for example, everyone's been to an Embassy Suites. You've got a large lobby, you've got a reception area. Um, this would be, you've got multiple restaurants, um, and they're typically operating under a single license. Um, a single liquor license, including all of those little bar areas, and they may even be individual operators within that same facility. Uh, and I believe that we can probably use that same model here.
And, and the argument's gonna end up being, well, if they have just the one license for the hotel, is, is the hotel's license gonna be compact and contiguous to the, the bar, the real bar in the casino area?
The entire premises, it should be one, single, compact and contiguous premises. And that's where the, we're gonna work with the applicant to demonstrate that.
So it sounds like the applicant's willing to do what we gotta do in your understanding of the law, that, that'll work its way out.
And we have worked with the applicant, uh, or the existing, uh, harness rec, I think maybe five different times to expand their premises. So they understand the requirements that go into that expansion, demonstration of the compact.
So what we're looking for here tonight is a, is a motion just for the plat and the CUP, um, but not final drawings. I don't know, these drawings aren't final, right?
No, these are, uh, in the working stages of being finalized.
When are you guys?
Go ahead, Bill.
When were you gonna, when did you wanna get started on this?
Okay, thanks, thank you for the question, because that is something that we're in the process of trying to work through too. And that's why we're in front of you tonight, is we'd like to end up getting abilities to move forward so we can get our geo peers down as soon as possible, as soon as the weather cooperates. And I think we're through with the snow now. We hope we are anyway. Uh, so if we could get the geo peers in the latter part of May, that would be what our desires would be. So we would end up having what we call our shell documents. That'll end up providing, uh, the city with documentation enough that they'd be able to, uh, issue a foundation permit at that particular point in time. And then once we get the foundation permit, we'd end up submitting the rest of the documents, because it'll take, uh, probably about three weeks in order for us to get all the geo peers in. Um, the land out there is a little bit on the mucky side, so we need to end up putting some peers down in order to hold the building. So, so we would probably end up then having the plans submitted to the city in the, um, the, the rest of the building plan, uh, probably the first part of, uh, June and then, uh, in June sometime, and, and then have those get approved before we'd obviously be able to go vertical with the building. So that's kinda the intent right now.
Okay. Elizabeth?
So Mr. Mayor, what you have before, before you is a preliminary and a final plat. And those two would be subject to title review and development agreement. And then you have before you a conditional use permit for a PUD development, as they've asked for certain exceptions. Um, in this particular case, there's three or four exceptions. And one thing I did wanna point out to you is the signage. The signage is, um, they're proposing three different signs. Um, two of them are roof signs, and the other one is what I would consider a wall sign. I did not have a chance to look at the criteria for the roof sign, so I'm, I'm, I'm not positive that that's in our code.
But, but we're still, this is all subject to the developer's agreement yet, isn't it? The approval of these? Of what's in front of us?
The signage may be included in that, uh, but I think what Elizabeth is trying to do largely for the council and the applicant is point out that the signage as proposed has not been reviewed. I believe it's condition fourteen does state that signage on the property requires administrative review and permitting by the city. So there's a possibility that this signage may not comply.
Sure.
With the city code, in which case they may have to be back here.
But they, they could add a parapet wall and put that on the parapet wall and things like that, right? I mean, that would, that would make it a wall sign. So there's, there's things they can do to.
That's facing kind of the, forward.
Yeah, that's, that's facing the track, so it's, you know, a little bit at an angle, so that's a sign that you'd see very well coming north on, on thirty-five.
Right, I mean, if it was on a parapet wall, it'd be a wall sign, right?
Well, in this particular case, I would consider that a wall sign.
That one looks like it's on a parapet wall, right?
Yes, correct. It's on a, the extension of the stair to the roof.
Sure, so I mean, if this one was on the same thing, then it would probably do the same thing.
Both sides.
But they were actually.
Three.
One on the front.
Yeah, and so, um, you know, the, the owner really wanted to, uh, try to do it on the south side, the track side, so it was, you know, seen well from thirty-five coming north. So, and part of the reason that we have the three in here as well, I mean, we, we kind of want them for, you know, identification, but we're also, we're trying to give enough information to our structural engineer for possible locations of the signage so that we can get that information to our geo peer person. So this is the maximum amount of signage that we would ever show. So we understand that it needs to be reviewed and we're, we're happy to work with you guys on that. We wanted to make sure we gave enough information to the structural engineer so that it wouldn't impact the geo peers.
So feedback from, I'm looking for feedback from the council. Is this concept something that you would, cause this is, this is departing a little bit. It's not a freestanding sign, it's not a wall sign, it's a?
It's also in an entertainment district with a horse track racing, so it's, you would expect something like this? Whether, whether it's on a metal supports or on a parapet wall, you would expect that there's. like this, whether, whether it's on a metal support or on a parapet wall, you would expect that there's some larger signs. I mean, you guys agree?
I would think so.
I'm not concerned about the square footage because I think they have plenty of square footage. It's just the, the roof sign is not a concept we've reviewed before.
Right.
And, and visiting with the, uh, sign manufacturer, um, one of the things that they, the one that did the original design here, one of the things that they said is, is that they would prefer not to have a back wall to it because then that increases the wind load, which would increase the stress on it. So he said it, it'd be better to have it like this so that the wind can blow through it rather than to have it obstructed. And so that was again, just what he had, had made reference to us on it. So.
Right.
I don't think it's any different than any of the other kind, any other venue in the country is the same thing kind of, you know?
Right. And then the, the, there's no change in the parking lot lights at all? So there's no reflected light plan that...
Uh, Mr. Mayor, there will be no changes in the parking lot lighting and that sort of thing. Um, there was reference made to the fact that there's going to be thirty-seven spaces eliminated, but it wouldn't be in an area where there is currently any parking light, light structure. Um, but we have over a thousand spaces out there. So we know we're well in compliance with the number of spaces we needed. So that's why we don't have that in the civil plans and/or in the architectural.
In the intensity of the lighting that goes in all these uprights, that, that's going to change this RGB lighting with?
Yeah, that's the intent is to have a linear strip RGB light
Okay.
in there that's color changing. So it will wash indirectly, wash the surface that's, uh, depressed.
Right. And the intensity though is, is not going to be like noticeable at the property line at all?
That's something we'll have to, uh, look at and maybe, um, you know, one of the things we may have to do is a mock-up to review this as well. But, um, you know, at night, obviously, there's not going to be a lot of other light, uh, on the building as well. So I don't think it has to be too intense. We did actually meet with our, uh, lighting consultant today too, to talk through options for that. So, um, you know, we may be able to put together a, a mock-up with his suggested fixture uh, and kind of show you what, uh, you know, that would mean. Um, but you know, we're sort of, um, you know, we want to, we want it to be noticeable. We don't want it to be obnoxious. So we gotta find...
Would, would it be changing?
Yeah, we...
How off, how quickly?
Not too quickly because we also don't want to, uh, you know, disturb the, the horses. I, we've heard that, you know, lights flashing and that can also, you know, be an issue for, for the horses. I don't know if that's an issue at night, but somebody did bring that up. Um, I think it would be very gradual, color changing. Uh, we could program this in any number of different ways. Uh, you know, where each panel could potentially be a different color or they all change at the same time. Um, but you know, not intended to be flashing.
Nothing strobing, nothing like fast, like fast. I think there's an eight second rule for, for the, for the freeway, for the...
Yeah, you're, you're probably right. And I, I'm sure my lighting consultant...
Yeah. Good. All right. Yeah, no, it looks pretty impressive.
Plans with the park and ride spots? Are they continuing that or eliminating it or do you know?
At the present time, they're going to continue to leave the park and ride as it is. If there ever does come a point where it's going to end up interfering with the rest of the property, why then they'd, they'd end up, uh, renegotiating it and/or changing the size of what the park and ride is.
Yeah, it looks like they're sucking up a lot of spaces in there. I went by the other day
Yep.
in the afternoon, I, we went by there and there was a lot of places. It looked like there was this actual split from what was in the track and what was, so they're expanding, obviously.
And, and I don't know that they're necessarily expanding more than what they currently have under contract right now. It might be that they're overflowing into an area where it should actually be further off to the west where they should be parking, but, uh, human beings being human beings, they're going to park as close as they can to where that bus pickup is at. So they're probably parking in an area where they're not really supposed to be parking, but there's no real strong, uh, policing of it at the present time is, is my speculation on that.
Okay. Any other conditions in there that we should be made aware of?
Uh, no more, there, there will be no further, um, conditions, but if we can turn to page thirty-eight and thirty-nine, this is the checklist that we've been using to go around application. I want to make sure that we get all of the, um, issues in the, in the motion. So, um, looking at the checklist, the first two things were tax amendments, which we already completed, uh, two years ago. They've applied for the conditional use permit to cover the, the variances that they are needing for several setbacks and height requirements. So in this particular case, you're going to be, um, approving the preliminary and final plat subject to title review and a developer's agreement and also a review of the reciprocal easement agreement that they will need because in this particular case, there's going to be cross easements for parking and utilities. So that would be the first, the first motion. The second motion is going to be approval of their site plan and conditional use permit for their PUD. And then in that case, you're going to have to amend the planner's report to include site plan review in the findings and conditions.
Okay.
So this tax amendment, this is a, this was a tax amendment to allow hotel in an HR district then, huh?
That is correct. And we did that in twenty sixteen, I believe.
Okay. Well, someone want to make a motion to the effect of your first motion?
We should let Jake set it up.
Make the motion or make the, uh...
Because I don't think any of us can remember all that.
Yeah, I, I was going to try, but...
I saw Mark down there with the... Okay, I messed that one up.
Mr. Mayor, the, for the first motion, I would recommend, uh, motion approve the preliminary and final plat subject to the staff report, including the conditions of approval, which included the comments Elizabeth noted.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, I think Jeff said first. Sorry, did he? Maybe it's because he's closer. All right, further discussion on that? All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have that one. And the second motion?
Mr. Mayor, for the second motion, uh, would be to approve the site plan review and planned, or conditional use permit for a planned unit development subject to the staff report and conditions of approval.
So moved. Second.
Okay. You got one.
Thank you.
All right. Um, any other discussion on that? All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have that one too. Okay, is there anything else we need to do on the, on the, uh, hotel for now? We're good. Okay. Thanks.
Well, thank you. We appreciate everything for, that you guys are doing to help us get this project underway and we're anxious to get going.
Can't wait to see it.
Yeah, we're just ready to get going.
Get those piles pounded in.
That's right.
Hope that don't disturb the horses. What, yeah, that, you won't do that while, I mean, you'll have to do that during the day then, right, or something?
Yeah, um, we've actually worked it out with the contractor already and the fact that they'll end up doing the pilings on the off times when the horses are out on the track and the horses are on the track starting, I think it's the eighth of May.
Uh-huh.
And that's coming right around the corner. Uh, but then what they'll do is they'll train in the morning and then at noon they can go out and they can start doing the pilings.
Okay.
And then they can't do it, and then Tuesdays they can do it during the day and then they race at night. And then Wednesdays is back to that same thing where they have to wait until afternoon. So, but we've worked on the schedule. So
Good.
we won't be doing the pilings while the horses are out there. So.
Awesome.
Who's the general contractor?
Uh, yes, there is a general contractor that's been selected on the project. We haven't executed a final contract with him yet.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. Correct. All right. Jody, doing a fine job there today.
Thank you. Okay, um, on topic two, uh, an eighty-five page draft of the comprehensive plan and an updated map was handed out at the planning commission meeting. Um, Hyla Mays from Bolton Mink delivered a PowerPoint presentation summarizing various points throughout the plan. And, um, highlights were, um, some of them were modification to the SR zoning, allowing up to sixteen units per acre and the, uh, reconfiguration of the showroom commercial and the light industrial, industrial around the interchange and then moving the residential further from, uh, thirty-five.
Mr. Mayor, you have a map, um, that was presented to the planning commission. There was a letter, which is on page sixty-eight from Don Stanky. There was one amendment, um, to that map that the planning commission made a recommendation for, and that was to change the property that Don Stanky owns from the commercial land use, which is the red versus the purple, which is light industrial land use.
So is that... So is that indicated on this map that we have in our packet or does it go in the Oxford edition? Ends in this black line just a little ways.
Um, this map reflects, um, the discussion that the planning had, commissioned, the planning commission had two meetings ago. And then in this past meeting, Dean brought it back. And then we had a letter from Don Stanky asking that his property not have any commercial land use, but in fact have a light industrial land use. So this property is, this O'Shea property here. And we had a, a short discussion at the planning commission meeting as the, to the merits of whether it should be, um, light industrial, commercial, and ultimately the planning commission is recommending that that property change from commercial land use to light industrial land use.
So then we've expanded it just south of the, the south line on the east side of Hornsby to the south end of the city property, correct? On the east side of Hornsby.
Um, it would, it would go, the line would be...
No, that's the west side. I'm starting with the east side. So the...
I believe that's the, um...
End of our, of the city property.
Yes, it is.
So Dan Mike's would be light industrial.
Right. And then, and then just the south line of the Oxford addition.
So there was only one other landowner. The, the Stanky property surrounds another landowner.
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't believe that landowner was at, at either one of the workshops. Once we complete that, once the, we have a draft map, I will ask, um, our financial consultant to do some numbers, but I, I need, I need the land use plan before I can do that.
Well, and then we extended it on the west side on freeway, west freeway drive up to the mini storage boundary? Correct?
Yep.
Yes.
All right.
Nothing. This is, this is informational.
Uh, no, I believe
Looking for direction?
Topic three was Mr. Stanky's letter. We did make a motion to recommend that and I think you guys have to approve that, uh, change as well.
I mean, how much farther is it going to go? I mean, at some point here we're, we've converted it all.
That's it.
That's it?
I mean, we've extended the light industrial.
That it? Done? If it's turned to light industrial, Elizabeth, correct me if I'm wrong, it could still be community showroom as well.
You know, um, that would, this is, this, this map is land use. And, uh, what you're referring to is zoning. And yes, within the zoning district, you can have rolling uses, which is if you allow something in a commercial showroom district, then you can roll it into, uh, you know, those uses into a different, um, district if that's, if that's what you choose to do. So this is again simply a land use plan and this is what goes into the comprehensive plan. The other thing I wanted to point out to you because it's, the, the colors are really close. If you look at suburban residential, it's kind of orangey-yellow. And if you look at rural residential, it's yellow. So this area here is not really yellow. That's really orange-yellow. And, um, that's suburban residential now. So it's, it, we, that would be some, for land use, that designation is a change from what it was previously.
It was a community showroom?
It, no, it was community retail.
Community retail.
This piece, you're talking about this piece right here?
Yeah. And the whole back piece, right?
Sewer and water up to that point?
Yep.
Yeah.
There is sewer and water up to that point.
That's the road going into Running Aces. That's run, is there a Running Aces boulevard? Right here. Right here. This is Running Ace's boulevard. So that, yeah, there's a bunch of houses.
There's a lot of swamp there too.
The other area is that, um, the planning commission is making the same recommendation as the overlay. So in this area, you do have the, um, it's called a commercial retail mixed use overlay, um, that also allows, so it will allow housing component and, uh, community retail. And then also in the southerly, um, portion of the southeast district, um, also allows for the, um, light industrial residential overlay.
Can the people in that district sell commercial then? I thought those people all wanted to sell.
I, I believe, I believe, um, in this, in this particular case, if this is the land use plan, then the suburban residential criteria will have to be developed. It, that, that designation is located in our zoning code, but the, um, design details and criteria have not been developed.
I think we should look at that. I think it should be able to sell.
Last meeting we had, I don't think anybody from them lots even showed up.
I think that one lady...
I had that corner. I only had one person show up for that whole area.
I know they were quite upset when the sewer and water went through there. I know that, you know, the assessments and I think they all wanted to sell. So I don't, I don't know.
What do you mean sell?
Well, they were hoping somebody came and bought the place, bought their land.
Commercial?
Commercial, whatever they could sell it as. I thought they had a first sales thing on them.
At this point, because it's, because it's in the Musa and suburban residential, then I think the idea there was it would be a, a, a market, market rate housing, but just at a higher density because of the availability of sewer and water.
Okay, for right now.
I think this is, um, for, up for discussion because we, we anticipate having a public hearing on the comprehensive plan for twenty forty on May nineteenth. And we wanted to have a map for recommendation for that public hearing.
Well, I had a meeting...
Oh, sorry, sixteen. Did I say nineteen? I'm getting, getting my, yeah, my taste picks up.
I had a meeting
Yes, sixteen.
uh, today and, you know, we're still talking about the interchange at, I don't want to poke any eye here, Elizabeth, but in this area here. And, um, the, one of the goals is to do an area-wide land, land use map that would encompass, uh, Lino, um, this area of Columbus as well as Lino, Forest Lake and Hugo. And, uh, that justification helps, um, uh, the, the future interchange that we want to get there. So I think we should look at that area use and make sure that we're not in, um, and that's going to be shortly, in the next week or two.
Are you talking the, the, your schedule or the schedule that we're on?
Well, I don't know when, when, when do we, when do we have to have our comp plan done? It's not for a while. Is it June? June, that's, yeah, it's a month or so. So, um...
We didn't file for an extension.
But there has to be a, the surrounding communities have to review it as we review others, right?
So, and, and so that's what the next steps are. We would have our public hearing with our draft.
Mm-hmm.
Once that public hearing is completed, that would be our final draft. And then the next six months is when we circulate it to all the surrounding communities, school districts, water supply districts and such. And then it goes to that council.
Yeah. Still go back to my concern that until we know what this does to our cash flow analysis of the millions and millions of dollars we have invested in the water system, I'd like to see how that's going to affect that. Because once it's converted to light industrial, it's not going to be big boxes and anything else. It's going to be light industrial. So that has to cash flow our sewer and water, which, which, uh, typically has to.
Well, my question to the council then is, is the land use map with, we'll still have to determine the, the Stanky property and whether you want to move that line. Um, I just want to make sure that what map we used when I went, when I go to, um, our financial... I just want to make sure that what map we used when I went, when I go to our financial, financial consultant.
Anyone wanna make a recommendation on the Stanky property there, including that industrial like he wants?
Yeah, I make a recommendation that we move it to that line. I mean, we've done it on the far east side. We've done it on the west side. And those were the, those were the residents that were concerned about it, the people that own their properties, whatever. So, I mean, we've had very little requests for anything else.
Well, the next guy's Harold's Toing, right?
Well, that's the Oxford Edition, and that's, that's a different, that's more of a, you know, retail space in there. That's all retail going on basically, most of it. But some of the potential things that are happening down in that corridor down there justifies it. Some of those, those big warehouses and whatever else they're, that aren't looking at that right now justifies it. I mean, I think we got the map pretty much worked out altogether. I mean, you know, I don't think we're overstepping.
Okay. All right. What do you guys think?
I agree with me.
You're all right with that one? Mark?
Yes and no. I mean, we're shrinking up our space quite a bit, but for the commercial retail, but how do you tell a guy he can't sell his property? I'd say move it. He can still put commercial in there.
Right. That was kind of my point.
Yeah.
I mean, that property down there's been sit for sale for a long, long time. And maybe the bridge makes a difference. We hope it does. However, you know, I, I just think the, the mix is good, so.
Jeff?
I'd say extend it up.
Extend it up?
I think we can. I'd say we can use both uses there, so nothing's going of yours.
All right. I, I agree with you guys. So you need a motion to that factor. You want to just take our direction and do it? Motion, you think?
Do you need a motion or is it good direction?
I think there's sufficient direction at this point.
Okay. So you heard your direction? Okay. Anything else?
Unless you have something to send back to the Planning Commission from you, the city council.
Guys have anything? No?
Well.
Mark?
Going back to the car lot deal, maybe something about rezoning or something.
Talk about that as far as.
Talk about that, no?
Car lots, whether a car, a dealership?
Dealership. I think you see no more come in. I think you gotta put a, we gotta, well, it's just not that. I mean, it could be tractors. It could be more, you know, we have to do something about it. And now's the time to start addressing it.
Well, I think the three things that we're having issues with car lot, auto repair and auto body. Those three issues are blossoming like crazy in residential areas, so.
Well, I'm sure you're talking truck repairs as well.
Well, of course.
So your direction is to look at the residential business ordinance and see what?
Not, well, the use of auto body.
Right, to be under that.
Yeah, under that.
And we're having, I mean, there's some, you know, Mr. Swenson, he's not, he's not really a good example of a big offender. We have some huge offenders in Columbus that just don't care, and we have no teeth. And they're, they, you know, and we have to have some teeth. We don't have any teeth. And there's plenty of space in Columbus to put these businesses in, you know, and.
Well, you know, a unlicensed truck unlabeled with two cars on it parked on your road for two days? That's just not acceptable. I agree with you, Bill. So I got to witness it this weekend.
Mm-hmm, with a whole backyard full of cars.
Yeah. All right. There you go. Thank you. Okay, public open forum. Is there anyone here for a public open forum on something that's not on the agenda? Anyone? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to the Batumus Roadway final plat request, pages sixty-nine to seventy of your packet. Elizabeth, you want to frame this up?
Mayor, council members, you have before you the final plat from Batumus Roadways. In your agenda packet, we do have a letter from them, their application, a letter from them on page sixty-nine and seventy. At this point, the, the staff has reviewed the final plat. It would be subject to recommendations of the engineer and planner, and also subject to title review and developers, panel developers agreement.
Okay. Someone want to make a motion to approve or deny?
I'll make a motion to what? Elizabeth, put in the record.
I'll second that.
Okay. For approval or denial?
For approval.
Oh, okay. All right. Any other discussions? All right, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
One opposed. Motion carries. Okay. Anything else on that? Moving on, we have the Park Advisory Board application for appointment on page seventy-one. So who's on the Park Board?
I am.
Want to discuss that for us?
Well, we've been short a couple people for ever since I can remember, so we had one resignation. So we gladly accept anybody who can come in and help us out.
Okay. Sounds good to me. Someone want to make a motion to approve this appointment?
I'll make a motion to prove it.
Second.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it. Okay. Yeah. Okay. Okay, Center Point Energy Grant application, pages seventy-two of the packet.
I'm wondering why we're not looking at one of these on Camp Three Road, why we're putting it over? Have we had a problem over there on the, on the, on the intersection where we proposed to put this?
So to, I want to say it was eighteen months ago because it was Peter Brover that talked briefly about an issue on Notre Dame. And at Columbus Elementary School, there are ball fields that are very close to Notre Dame. And when people park on the street, they can't necessarily see the ballpark as they're approaching the school. And so the complaint was, shouldn't there be some flashing lights or some indication that there is a school and a playground or ball field very close to the road and that they should slow down? And so when we had the, the grant application came out, and you have a very short period of time, there's about thirty days to write the grant to submit it, we thought perhaps it would be a good use for this grant to put signage up in. The signage is rather expensive for, for the lights, so we would do one, one this year, one the following year. But again, we are bringing it before you to see if you have maybe another idea. It's a very short list of what they're, the grant application will cover. And it's mostly fire equipment and/or safety measures or trap, or I think it says safety controls, meaning signage.
Are these powered flashing lights or are they solar?
Solar.
Just like we have by our crosswalk? The crosswalk?
Well, I think, I think this particular, these particular lights are a little bit more complicated than that.
Correct. I mean, so these lights have a, they have a flashing beacon, and I believe there's some LEDs around the speed on the side that.
Is that a reduction when children are?
The signage that's there was hard to enforce the speed because there's not, so it's when schools in session, but it's not, it's not always when schools in session. It's when people are at play at the playground, too, so.
Children present sometimes you see. When children are present, you see a lot.
Correct. So that would allow them to be more visualized.
Yep.
I, I drive that area quite a bit in the summer, and I've gone to a lot of ball games there. And that one field is really close to the road and with the cars there, kids are running around. I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
Just to bring awareness that something's going on. I mean, obviously, people should know there's cars parked there, but it can hurt.
Okay.
On the children's safety's sake.
There you go, Mark, for the children. All right, so someone want to make a motion? Do we have to accept this grant or?
This, this is the application for the grant.
Okay.
So the maximum grant is $2,500. So our total equipment price is $9,446.
Oh, I see.
For that, we were two. And so we figured that we would do one this year, one next year. We would apply for the grant again for the second light. So unless the council felt it was important, and then we would find the money to fund the northbound and southbound.
Where's the funding coming from for the extra money?
We have to pull it out of the general fund?
It would come out of the general fund or the sign fund.
Speaking of the sign fund, off the subject, how we doing on sign replacement?
Pretty well, actually.
Good. All right, somebody want to have an idea whether they want to do both or one, or do one this year and one next year? Mark, you're.
One next year.
You're for one year, is? Okay.
One this year, one next.
So it'd be half of ninety-four?
Uh, the budget would then would be half of ninety-four.
Okay. So that would only be a $2,000 hit or so.
I'll second.
Okay.
Put a grant in next year for the $2,500? Is that every year?
Oh, probably half of that.
The grant opportunity is every year.
Okay.
Like half, they own it, so.
That would work. All right. Any other discussion on that?
So which way do you put it coming from?
Probably on the, the going north side because that's closest to the ballpark.
Closest they can. They'd probably come south.
If they're going south, they're on the other side of the road. They got another eight feet to miss people.
Of course, they don't have a big long stretch to get up to.
Yeah. Okay. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it.
On that, on that subject, can I talk about Kettle River Boulevard and, or Kettle, Kettle River and Camp Three?
Um.
I think we need some flashing signs, stop signs there. There's another accident a week or two ago.
Kettle River and Camp Three?
Camp Three Road and.
Camp Three Road, it comes in.
Kettle River, um.
We gotta cut some trees back there, too. If you're coming, going west, you're looking to.
Well, I've actually talked to Doug about that, and Doug Fisher, and they'd actually like to change that whole thing and put in a roundabout there someday.
Someday, but right now there's accidents.
Well, the, the trouble is, the trouble is Camp Three doesn't come in perpendicular to Kettle River. Uh, when I come on that corner, I usually just turn to the right so that I'm perpendicular, so I can see, and then I go straight.
And I do think some of the accidents are true that they don't see the stop signs. But the, the two that happened recently, the cars were stopped, and then they drove into the oncoming traffic. I mean, so I don't.
Probably didn't see it because of the angle.
And, and I'm saying, so I thi, I think there's a couple of different issues of why traffic accidents happen there.
Well, they were stopped and turned into the oncoming traffic?
The two accidents, both accidents happened three hours apart. They were both stopped, and the traffic going north and southbound on Kettle River, they drove into them. They, you know what I mean, the person.
They pulled out in front of them?
And they pulled out in front of them. One actually pulled, you know, hit the passenger door.
They didn't see the car.
They didn't, that's my.
Yeah, and that's because they, they're not perpendicular.
So it wa, it wasn't because they didn't see the stop sign. They were stopped.
Right.
They stopped and went.
No, that, I'm saying, yeah, you see the stop sign, but once you stop, if you stop straight, you're at an angle. So it, your door pillar is right in the view of the oncoming traffic.
And I think that, I think that, at least the last two, that's what it was. It wasn't that they, because Anoka County put the double signs on.
They're responsible for the signs? Is that Anoka County puts those up?
Yeah.
Well, it's our road, though.
Anoka County does have signs. We do pre-stands.
All right. Can we request them to put a flashing light up because they.
It's not they don't see it, though. That's the problem.
Also put, uh, oncoming traffic does not stop or something like that. You see those signs on it once in a while? I mean, you gotta do something before they put a roundabout. It could be, who knows when they're gonna put the roundabout.
Well, we, we could straighten the road out. We could straighten the approach to the road. That's the problem is the road, the approach to the road needs to be straightened.
Or maybe it turns into a four-way.
Well, you could, but.
I go out there. I never noticed it.
No, I, I can show you. It's not good. I go out every day, so.
If there's even more roads that come in at crooked angles on that one, the one on Howard Lake, the Kettle River is really bad. I can never see it set right on that one.
Yeah, that one's bad, too.
And Notre Dame and Kettle River. I mean, holy cow. I mean, how crooked does that one get?
Dennis, is there a way to, isn't there a simple way to stripe it or, you know, add a little bit of asphalt to force people to straighten up?
On Camp Three?
Yeah.
Might have to do a little winding.
Wind it a little bit?
How about for now, request Anoka County some flashing stop signs and a sign underneath it, oncoming traffic does not stop, whatever they say on it, just for now? I mean, you shouldn't have to wait for somebody to get seriously hurt, I would think. We got plenty of accidents that's on our record, so it's no surprise. Somebody's gotta do something.
Agree. Somebody's gotta do something, but I don't think that's the sign. Has to do something with blind, blind approach or. Something about the approach angle. They, they make a sign for that, Dennis? JW? Blind approach or?
Well, yeah, I mean, if you're, you can put the signs on Kettle.
No, on Camp Three is where the issue is.
But you could also put it on Kettle to watch, you know, for cross traffic.
Yeah, we could do that. Or stop sign.
Yeah. Cheaper than all of them.
No, actually, people blow through those, too. I don't know. What do you think?
I would like to see a flashing light on the stop signs and the sign underneath it for now. I don't know, is it the angle that bad when I was pulling up to it?
Okay.
Maybe I'll have to look at it closer.
I wonder how many accidents have been at that intersection? I mean, I've come close once, and then we had the double stop sign. We took that. I won't get teed over one time, but I wonder how many accidents have been here. Would it weren't a four-way stop? I know it's pretty close to all the four spots, but.
I mean, you're gonna go another quarter mile and stop again, but.
Yeah.
Half a mile. How, how about that we do this? What if we have Dennis take a look at it? He's a traffic guy. JW, see if there's any, any, what the right approach would be other than just, I, because I get you want to do something, Jeff, but I'd rather not just do something if it's not the right thing.
Except for a flashing light, you know, Jeff says is the cheapest thing to do in the interim is the county to put that up.
But the question is, is that the problem? So, yeah, it's cheap if they'll do it, but.
Well, I know it's, I, I mean, I know what you're saying about the angles, right? But also, there's a lot of overgrowth. There's a lot of tree overgrowth there, looking to the north, west, looking to the south.
That's true.
Yeah. I mean, you've got to really stick your nose out to look at the south.
That's true.
So, I mean, some of that should be trimmed back, and they did it a couple years ago, right?
They just did it on that on the by.
Right. But you know whose problem, uh, that's, uh, what's his name's house is on that corner into the south.
Jake, what, what kind of rights do we have on visibility on private property for tree trimming?
Got to be an easement, though. Road right of way.
Right, and, I mean, any type of damage to private property.
No, as far as us trimming the trees back.
Right. I mean, you, you've got to take a look at, I mean, it's definitely dependent on the circumstances, but any type of damage to private property is subject to, you know, taking its claim, just compensation. So even if, even if you have to do it, I mean, I, I believe you probably have right to do it, um, depending on the circumstances, but particularly.
If it diminishes their property value, they could go for that.
Right. I mean, they could argue that you need to pay them for damage to the trees. But certainly, I think you probably can do it.
Even if it's in road right of way? Because look what they're doing, trimming the roads up long, uh, further up towards Wyoming there. I mean, they really went downtown on clearing the.
Right, if it's in, if it's, and we'll, we can take a look at it if you'd like to direct us to, but if it's in the road right of way, it's a different situation. You certainly have authority to clear it out.
If, if Kettle River is ass-traveled, or if it's a easement road, there might be thirty-three feet from the center line, and might, you might be able to do some clearing.
And it's, it's a county intersection slash right of way there, so we don't need to clear Kettle River. We do Camp Three, but not Kettle River.
Oh, that's true.
County do that, then.
Well, maybe that's probably a better approach to get the visibility cleared, cleaned up.
County road, county intersection.
We'll do our, we'll do Camp Three. They'll do, you, you can take care of that? Call somebody at the county to say, hey, we want.
I can.
Maximum visibility?
I don't know that they'll respond very well, but I can absolutely bring their attention.
Okay. I say we do that for now.
Well, especially if you're coming from Lake Drive up Kettle, and you stop and you're headed west. You look both ways. The sun's shining through there.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, to the north, that's, you know, right up against the, there, and to the south, that's, that's the worst.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Someone either make a motion, or we're gonna move on?
I'd like to make a motion that we request the county to put flashing lights on a stop sign both directions.
Okay.
East, west.
And trim the trees?
And trim the trees.
I'll second it.
Okay. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it. Okay. JW will do that, or should we have the office do that?
Go back one second. When I almost got in that accident, I talked to Elizabeth about an additional stop sign there in the county, took care of that with a phone call from you, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Additional stop sign? You mean a...
Well, they put one on both sides because the one was behind a pole.
Oh.
There's a telephone pole to the right there, and a stop sign was literally behind that, so you couldn't see it. So, then they put one to the left of the road too, so there's two stop signs there as you're hitting west. So, maybe Elizabeth can make a call, it'd be a little more persuasive.
Okay, all right.
She'd love to.
Okay, engineers report.
The only item I had was you should have a resolution, and this is regarding the grading and drainage plan for the northeast quad of thirty-five and ninety-seven. As you recall, you previously directed us to prepare that, and we're ninety percent done. But the reason for doing this is that we would follow the Chapter four twenty-nine process, and it would be assessed to the potential land purchaser of that.
Okay.
So, this would, we'd come back to the next council meeting with feasibility report.
Okay, so what resolution number would this be?
Make a motion to accept Resolution eighteen twelve.
Second.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it. Okay. Attorneys report. Very good. Counsel report, Bill?
Were we going to talk about that house thing tonight or not? Some big deal, Bill?
Oh, that's a variance, that's a variance application for the next planning commission meeting.
Nothing? Danny?
Nothing.
Mark?
Nope.
Nothing.
Okay, I have nothing. Moving on to the public works report.
No report.
No report. Public information coordinator report.
No report.
I remembered you. City administrators report.
I have two items under my report, and then I have some questions for the council. The treasury report is not completed, although Bill Warner is working hard on getting our books prepared. We went through audit last week, and we have one more day of audit, so we're, we're moving in the right direction. The senior center phone, last year when we renegotiated the lease with the senior center, there was a question about the phone and phone services and, and what was going to happen with the phone. And we have now resolved that issue that we are going to, the mayor is going to buy the senior center a phone. We're going to use our internet service in order to provide them phone service because our phone service is provided, you know, through our internet service. They're going to port out their number so that they are able to do that. However, during this process, they've paid the phone bill, and now have indicated that they would like the city to pay the phone bill.
For the future?
For the past.
For the past?
The, yes, they would like the city to pay the April and May bill, phone bill, and they would like four months in arrears to be paid. So, I'm bringing them, bringing that to you to, to direct me as to what you would like me to do because they've indicated in their lease that they signed that they are not responsible for paying for their phone.
Really? Have you been using it?
I've got a question. Why is a phone required at a senior center?
You know, there are emergencies, I suppose they use. I don't, I know in the past, maybe, maybe today you can use your cell phone, but I know in the past, if it wasn't for emergencies, they do get messages, you know, and such, so I'm really not sure how much traffic there is on their phone, but they've indicated they want a phone.
What if we put a phone right out in the hallway where they have to go through to get in there on the city's phone line and not have one there?
Well, I, I mean, the...
Well, I'm just saying...
I mean, I volunteered to buy them the phone and pay for the service, and, in getting the wire run and the time it took to get it done, now they want us to back pay. They need, if they're going to accept my donation, they're going to have to pay the bill. That's my views, I guess. I don't know what you guys think.
Well, usually when you lease some space, you pay for your own phone.
Pretty much. If you have something you don't need, you cancel it.
And I think you've been plenty gracious to do what you did, so...
So, okay. So, you got your direction there?
Okay, I've got my direction.
Any else?
I received an email from Steve Massey, and Steve Massey is the school superintendent, and he has indicated he, he would like to offer a presentation to the city council, and he wants to know whether or not the city council would like a presentation on the new construction projects and perhaps a levy referendum, and he wanted to know what a time would, if, what time would be a good time for him to present, should you want a presentation.
So, they're getting ready to go after...
Yeah, they are.
Are they levying?
They are, yes.
They're getting ready to go after it. Are they levying?
Yep.
I don't, I don't know all the circumstances. He just, he just indicated that, you know, that he would like to, if you thought the presentation was prudent, that he would come before you and make a presentation.
Why would that...
I think we would hear about it through the papers and everything. I don't know why we would have to do the presentation personally, but if you guys want to.
I agree with you.
Okay. Jeff?
No, I don't think we can hear.
So, that, we don't...
Okay. The other one is I was contacted today by Senator Matt Little. He is a representative from Lakeville. And if you remember, many years ago, Forest Lake and Columbus jointly for, or joined the Metro Transit taxing District, and that's how we received bus service to and from St. Paul and Minneapolis. And there seems to be an issue with the metro traveler, and he is trying to get an amendment into the bill tomorrow in order to allow the mobile traveler, and there's probably another word for that of what that bus service is called, for seniors and people with disabilities. I indicated to him it was, because it was today, and I told him I would, I would at least let you know about it because he wanted a letter of support for, from the council, and I indicated him that we really didn't have a whole lot of time to discuss it. Neither have we had an opportunity to talk to our own representatives to, to know how they feel about it. But I wanted to bring it to your attention since he did contact the city, and he is going to go to the floor tomorrow for this amendment.
Is this a separate entity from the Met, or Mass Transit Mobile, or...
Metro Mobility?
Yes, thank you.
Is it part of the Met Council?
It is, it is Metro Mobility, yes. He said, "My amendment would bring Metro Mobility to Forest Lake, Columbus, Maple Plain, and Lakeville."
Do we need that? Jeff, you're on board with most of that stuff?
I know.
What do you think?
Is that so? It seems like it's heavily subsidized. I don't know, I don't know.
Do our residents need that?
I suppose they could use that, I mean, you know.
Danny, you're getting old. What do you think?
I think it's a good idea, but it's too late to do anything about it.
Well, are they looking for a recommendation or a resolution, or what are they looking for?
He says here that, he said, "Let me know, let me know if you, if you need anything." He made a couple of different bullet points. He indicates here that Columbus has been paying Metro Transit taxing, or Metro, yeah, transit tax is for many years, which we have. Again, he says the amendment was only for four communities. The, it is for the age, you know what I mean, aging and for seniors and those with disabilities. And the cost of, the total cost of the bill is one point seven million dollars, but would be totally offset by data collection and sharing provision, including in the amendment, which would bring eight to ten million dollars in federal money to the state. Then he goes on to say, "The general support would be strong enough anytime before nine AM tomorrow morning," because he, he's bringing it to the floor, so... It really, it wasn't really a whole lot of time for me to talk to our representatives, but I understand the legislature moves fast, so I understand that.
And I understand, I don't know if we know enough about what it is or what he wants to do to really sign up. What do you guys think? Not enough information to take off?
Information, and this should be included anyway, but part of the Met Council.
I think, I think he wants to get us so we're able to call Metro Mobility because we paid the taxes into it. I think that's all he wants to do, is three communities, four communities? Why'd you say three?
Four communities. It's Forest Lake, Columbus, and if you remember, Forest Lake and Columbus had to jointly come in because the buses came out of the transit center and running ACs, so we both had to agree to come in, and it's Maple Plain and Lakeville.
So, we're paying the taxes to be in the Met Council, but we're not getting Metro Mobility up here, is what the deal is.
Hopefully, that's all the simple it is, but...
Yeah.
Can't guarantee me that. So, is he's looking for a resolution then or something, or what?
He was looking for a letter of support, and I indicated to him, I know I didn't have, I didn't have enough materials to really, you know, to write a letter, and I indicated to him that it would be hard to put something together when the council really didn't have a chance to discuss it. However, I wanted, I wanted to bring it up to you just so you knew what was going on tomorrow.
Well, I'm not comfortable not knowing what he's about or it's about. If you're right, Jeff, I'd be all over it, but... We're going to pass on that, I think. Anything else?
I have nothing further.
All right. So, I guess at this time I have to clear the chambers for the...
Mr., Mr. Mayor, if I, if I could, before you clear the chambers...
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Want to make a couple of statements and just address the council.
Okay.
As you know, six citizens have served the city with a district court lawsuit. They've also brought some claim, claims to the Court of Appeals, and these suits allege, among other things, that the manner in which the city responded to the several requests from Batumis Roadways were invalid and that the action should be overturned. The League of Minnesota City's Insurance Trust has retained the law firm of Green Espal to represent the city in this matter. These circumstances, I believe, require that the council seek legal advice concerning litigation strategy, and that is covered under attorney-client privilege. If that discussion were to occur in the public, it would be detrimental to the interests of the city and would have a significant adverse impact on the city's ability to effectively deal with the litigation. So, accordingly, we believe that the closed session between the council and counsel for the city from Green Espal is necessary to attain a result that is ultimately beneficial to the city and the members of the public.
Okay. So, with that in mind, Minnesota Section thirteen D O five subdivision three B, to discuss a litigation of a matter between Batumis Roadways and Janet Haglen, ETL versus City of Columbus, requires me to clear the chambers. So, we give you guys a few minutes.